Good evening. I'd like to call to order our Board of Education and Work session. Today is April the 22nd, 2019. Could I have someone read the approval of our revised agenda?
Sure. I moved the agenda Monday, April 22nd.
BA 19 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Director Laverty.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
President Humble.
Aye. Next on the agenda is a report from Dr. Buck.
Great, thanks President Humble. So Johnson Steam Academy's PTA has been awarded a grant to host a community event that will be open to the public around digital citizenship and safety. This is the first grant of its kind to be awarded in Iowa. The formal community event is an opportunity for parents and guardians to better understand what it's like for children to grow up online, how to work through real-life online interactions, and how children can be better protected online. Attendees will walk away with an action plan to set guidelines on device use and online habits. While the event is open to the entire Cedar Rapids community, those who wish to attend should RSVP through the Facebook event. Washington High School's Chapter of Amnesty International is gearing up to host their annual Jamnasty event this Friday from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Students will be performing to raise money to support South Sudanese refugees and victims of the humanitarian crisis. Performers will include all-state vocalist Sophia Burke, Pam Slam poet Arbe Hasani, and the student band of Proof of Concept. Over the years, Jamnasty has raised thousands of dollars to support human rights through Amnesty International. This is just one of many opportunities in our schools to engage in impactful citizenship. Our April 11th, oh, on April 11th, our staff member Teresa Keely received a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Association of Alternative Education. Teresa, who's currently a staff member at Polk, is a graduate of Metro High School. After graduation, she went on to pursue education and came back to work in Cedar Rapids to work at Metro High School. At Metro, she led the outdoor education program and was involved in Metro's theater arts offerings. Of course, of Teresa, her colleagues say she's an incredible woman who has earned the love and respect of many students and staff. So congratulations to Teresa. And finally, all of our eligible middle schools were recently notified of their recognition as Project Lead the Way distinguished schools. These include Franklin, Harding, McKinley, Taft, and Wilson. Recognition was based on enrollment, student participation, and course offerings. The Project Lead the Way recognition program honors districts and schools committed to increase student access, engagement, and achievement in their Project Lead the Way programs. These middle schools were among just 426 Project Lead the Way schools across the country to receive recognition this year. So congratulations to all of them for that recognition.
Thank you. Are there any board reports?
I do have one. So as I had mentioned during our last meeting, the Safe Equitable and Thriving Task Force Grant Committee, I'm the representative from our board that's been meeting with that committee. Last week, we actually had our committee where we actually reviewed the grant proposals. So we actually had a pretty good number of proposals that came from different organizations in the community to try to fill voids this summer. So it's good to see that the partnership that we've undertaken with the county, with the city, is part of that process, is hopefully going to bring about some good programming this summer. So the recommendations from that committee, I believe, will be reviewed by the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation, and then from there, they'll be published. So we'll be on the lookout for that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have two things. Was able to attend in tour Wright Elementary with Principal Crowe, and it was great school. Got great things going on. If anyone wants more information, they can ask me directly. As Director Anholt is absent, he asked me to give the legislative update. So I have an update on the SAVE. So SAVE passed out of the House with diverted 15% to the Property Tax Equity Fund relief and went into the Senate. The Senate Ways and Means Committee met on the 17th to consider the extension. They created their own amendment to increase the diversion to 30% to the Peter Fund for Property Tax Equity and Property Tax Relief. It was approved on party lines. Please contact me directly regarding more information on SAVE, including diversions and projected growth. The House File 690 concerning children's mental health has, the bill was approved in the House and in the Senate and is being sent to the Governor. I also have more information on any of these bills. If anyone wants to contact me, I'd be happy to share them. The financial literacy implementation is stalled in the House. That is House File 420 and Senate File 139. Please continue to contact your representatives about the need to provide some relief from the timeline with a four-year delay, which would be preferred, or a one-year delay would be timeline critical. There's also active bills that are regarding online learning, practice test score, conflict of interest threshold, siblings in classes, reporting, reportings of school misconduct, ISL legalizing act, concurrent enrollment in STEM, and the education appropriations. It's my understanding that the legislature wishes to have these all concluded by the end of this week.
Any more? Thank you. Next, we'll move to communications, delegations, and petitions. And I'd like to remind those who have requested to address the board to, please step to the podium when your name is called, state your name and address, and you will be given five minutes. And Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer. We have one here. Tanya Johnson.
Hello, Tanya Johnson, 3816 Riverside Drive. As district resolution team facilitator and CREA president, I have been contacted by members and non-members about student behaviors across the district. Teachers and parents are concerned for the students with the behaviors, the classmates of these students, and for themselves. We understand that district administration is trying to address these concerns. The Cedar Rapids Education Association made a decision as a union to actively engage and help to give voice to those concerns. Before spring break, we conducted a series of meetings inviting educators to share their experiences and suggestions for solutions to classroom behaviors and safety concerns. This gave educators from different buildings a chance to know they aren't alone. We compiled the information from these meetings and put together an action plan, including, number one, a presentation on understanding implicit bias, microaggressions, and stereotypes. All are welcome to attend this presentation. It is being given tomorrow and Wednesday at the African American Museum from 4:30 to 8:30. Anyone interested, please let us know which day you would like to attend, and we, that way, we'll have enough food for everyone. Second, CREA will be hosting a screening of the movie Resilience: The Biology of Stress and Science of Hope at the Cedar Rapids Library on Thursday, May 16th, from 5:30 to 8:30. We will view the film and have a discussion led by author and educator Jen Alexander. Third, we have hired a community organizer, Lauren Whitehead, who will be coordinating our efforts at promoting educator voice in our Cedar Rapids community. She will be developing a community coalition aimed at promoting educator, parent, and community organization viewpoints, answering the community school questions. One, what do you love about your school? Two, what is your vision for our schools and our community? And three, what do our schools need to achieve that vision? This is work funded by a grant from the National Education Association, which we are all very excited about. This grant follows our February of 2018 participation at the Milwaukee's Institute for Community Schools with Dr. Buck, Board President Humble, Rod Dooley, Clint Stone, and other community stakeholders around the beginning of the community school's work at Hoover. We have a lot going on and are excited about supporting our educators, our students, and our community. Thanks, and I hope to see you at one of these events. Thank you.
Next, we will move on to our consent agenda to the board. Are there any items for further discussion or anything that you would like polled?
President Humble needs BA 19321. Poll for a separate vote due to a conflict.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just have a comment about the Iowa Association of School Boards' membership renewal. So that's BA 19314 dot one. So I just, you know, the association does a lot of great work, and Gary Anholt is hired or elected onto their board, and I think it would be good feedback for them to give to Gary, to give to the board, that their efforts in the legislature were a little bit lacking this year. And I think for what our needs are, there could have been some additional work done and maybe some forethought in that. So just me speaking, I'm somewhat disappointed in their efforts and their lobbying, which our dues help pay for, so.
So you're seeing BA 19314? Is that it?
Yeah, the Iowa Association of School Boards. So I'm not asking for a separate vote or anything. I'm just making a statement.
Okay. Gary. So we'll need a motion to accept the consent agenda. And I believe, Laura, we have the one polled for a separate vote.
Right, so it would be anything except for BA 19321.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
A roll call due to the personnel report and base wage increase of employment.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Laverty.
Aye. Then we'll have the separate vote for BA 19321.
So I think what Director Jacobo is asking for is to pull out one specific part of 321. Is that correct, or all of 321?
Just one part.
One part.
Yep. 321?
So 321, so.
So let's do a roll call, yeah, roll call vote on the SEIU Local 199 secretaries, and then we'll do a separate roll call vote on Local 208 and Local 497.
So roll call on secretaries?
Yes, let's just do that one first.
Roll call?
Yep.
Is there, do we need a mo?
No, just a roll call on that. So Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Epstein.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Laverty.
Aye.
President Humble.
Aye. And the next one is the?
321, we'll look at Local 208 and Local 497. We'll do that as a roll.
Roll call.
As well, Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Laverty.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
And President.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we'll be moving into our work session, and this is an information item only, and it's about digital literacy and the tech plan. We have Greg Barnum and Ryan Reitstrom. Oh, is it right? It, okay.
Read strength.
Read strength, okay. I want to say it right.
So we're going to start off showing a video. So we'll let the video speak for itself. This kind of encapsulates our why for what we're here to do. So, Justin, will you get a moment?
This is how we learn. Here, and here, and here. From each other. From experience. This is how we learn. And this is how we learn. By listening. By reaching out. Because the more we see, the more we understand. The more paths we explore, the further we'll go. The classroom isn't just a room with four walls. It's anywhere, anytime, and it's big enough for all of us. When you give students access to the whole world, you give them the power to affect it.
So that's a commercial for Google. We all get that. But I will say that it does sort of a nice job of giving a one-minute elevator speech as to why I think my team exists. And that's to sort of reshape and redefine how our kids are experiencing education. Typically, when we show this video, we try to tease out a couple of things, but since we don't have a lot of time this afternoon or this evening, we're going to cut right to chase. Won't do sort of the good teacher thing. We'll do the, we'll do more of a presentation thing. And one of the things I want to make clear about that video, and maybe you noticed it, maybe you didn't, was that the learning in that video was highly experiential, wasn't it? Not everybody had a laptop open all the time. Not everything was digital. Not everything, it was a lot of doing, a lot of learning together, and then the tools were accentuating that. And that's a really important piece of why we're doing what we're doing. And so if we can advance slide, please. This is kind of our take on that. So we believe in creating environments that are accessible and equitable for all students to have a plan, a path, and a passion for their future. It's our little take on the district mission statement. But there's a couple of key words that are different there. You'll also notice, just off to the side, there's the district's profile of a graduate. That's our target. This is our why. And when we talk about what we're doing and why we're doing it, these are the conversations we try to root it in, because, to quote Simon Sinek, "If people don't believe your why, they don't believe in that, your how and your what, doesn't matter." So what we're going to do for the next couple of moments here is talk a little bit about the technology plan, which was put together actually a year before I got here. Fantastic plan, and we're going to give you some updates on that. If you remember, the plan has four critical components. We kind of broke them down. Ryan Reitstrom's going to talk about the first two components, and I'll talk about components three and four. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan, and let's go ahead and advance the slide.
So at any point in time, if you have questions for Craig or I, just let us know. We'll have a time for questions at the end, but if something pops up right now, just let us know, and we'll answer them. So Critical Commitment 1 and 2 really focus on learning, student learning and staff learning. A few updates with our student learning. In our student learning, we call out the ISTI standards. We really want to focus on something, and we're trying to dispel this throughout all of our community, is that first, we focus on the outcome. What is the student achievement? Then we think about the strong teaching strategy. So you think about teaching and learning department with CCT and our IDLs and IDSs. So what's the strategy? Then we talk about the digital tool as a way to enhance or transform the experience, but it's not about the tool. It's about the learning first and the teaching strategy second, and then the tool. We are going to take our work, and we're going to really focus it around the profile of a graduate instead of the ISTI standards, and that's something that we're going to take back to the technology community to see, to make sure that aligns more, because the profile of a graduate wasn't there when the technology plan came about. So we want to see if that's more in alignment for our student outcomes. Second, we want to call to light that there is a six pillars of implementation that we've focused on. This is what we're working with all the buildings, with the high school, a vision, professional learning policy, support, logistics, and communication. That allows us to make sure that we have successful implementation. Building leadership teams are owning this process, and we're there to support that with them. Critical Commitment 2 is all about professional learning. These are just a few glimpses of what we're doing to help transition our staff to Infinite Campus and to G Suite. We're offering voluntary evening sessions from 4:00 to 30:00 to 6:00 for all staff members around five core apps. We also have three, two and a half full days of professional learning that is on contract time at the end of the school year. The high school will get a full day, middle school will get a full day, and the elementary will get half a day. We'll replicate that in the fall as well. So that'll be two full days of implementation and professional learning. We're offering digital literacy boot camps, one and a half hour sessions this summer that staff can come to and get paid for around Infinite Campus as well as G Suite. And then we're also, on those days in the summer, we are calling upon our teacher leaders. So June 7th, 10th, and 11th are going to be facilitated by our teachers, or as Carlos Grant would call them, our champion teachers. So we want all of our teachers to be a collective effort so that we can learn together instead of a top-down, so that we're supporting with that. So that's our professional learning and our student outcomes.
Thanks, Ryan. One of the things that might not have been crystal clear there, too, when we're going at warp speed, and we kind of felt like we've been doing that all year, by the way, is that you'll notice we're not, we're not talking about one-to-one or student devices very much, are we? That's a big deal to us, and we're taking that very seriously. But if you went back and you look back at this document back here, see if I can, oops, I'm going the wrong way. See if we can get back to this document right here. That's the next slide, of course, it's not going to go. Would be that six pillars of implementation. What you'll notice when we got there was that we didn't talk about one-to-one. There it is. It's called digital literacy implementation, because that's emblematic of the change we talked about, that Ryan laid out. Outcomes, strategy, tool. Okay? And that's our way to get there. So this is really a key understanding for us, and whenever we get out in front of people. Let me learn how to use a remote control. There's the irony for you, right? The executive director of technology can't run the remote. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about commitments three and four. This is kind of more of the stuff, okay? So commitment three is all about access to resources. This is where we start talking about student devices. And you just approved, and I just sort of did a wipe of the brow on the consent agenda. I see a pretty large item on there for 5,700 Chromebooks that we'll be giving out to students next, next fall. Very, very exciting, so thank you for your support. That's the main piece in four, and we'll be using G Suite to support that, in case you didn't follow along with how we got there. We ran a process this fall around this, where we gathered about 120 student voices, 50 to 70 teacher voices, depending on how you want to count that, and some principal voices and administrative voices around this, gathered their feedback to look at what would be the best device and best ecosystem to support our learning going forward, and this is where the evidence took us. We're very excited about this device. I wish I had one to show you, but we had to send back the demo device last week, so I don't have one in front of me. But it's a really cool device. It has a 360 hinge, so it flips over into a tablet mode. It's got very touch, tough glass. It's got what's called Gorilla Glass, so it's really tough. It's got a touchscreen, and most importantly to me, it's got two cameras. It's got one up here at the top and one down here at the keyboard, so that when kids are actually filming, they can flip it in tablet mode to see what they're doing. And it sounds like a minor thing, but as I always say in these environments, these nuances really matter. To quote Mark Twain, when you're writing, you know, he said, "The right word, difference between the right word and the almost right word is the difference between a lightning bug and a lightning bolt." It's the same sort of thing here. There's an exponential difference in some of these details, and that's one of them. So we're thrilled about that. We are doing a bunch of community nights. In fact, we're going to be running out here. In fact, Ryan already took off. We got a community night going on here in just a few minutes at Jefferson High School tonight. We've met with the Washington staff, or it's not staff, we did meet with the Washington, we met with the Washington community last week. We met with Kennedy on April 2nd. We were out at Metro in March as well. At these, we're putting out all sorts of really interesting information about how we're planning this, some things about policy, the why, all those good things. But we're also making some other inroads, letting people know about the 1 Million Grant, which if you don't know about that, that's incredibly exciting. It's a grant we've partnered with Sprint with to give 300 hotspots out into the community. That's a difference maker, and we've got a partnership right now with MediaCom to provide low, or low, low-cost internet to low-income families. That was a lot of, that was a lot of sentence there, but I couldn't get it out. And we're working with I'MON as well. We just haven't got the deal finalized with them. Next up, we've referenced it a couple of times. We're right in the middle of a transition to a new student information system. Very, very excited about that. This should give us much better data, we're hoping, and we're really working hard on that. In fact, Ryan referenced some professional learning. We've been engaged in that for about the last six weeks, and that will run all the way into the fall. That'll range from anywhere from the offerings that Ryan talked about, but we've also paid for several hundred hours of training with campus to get that done, training everybody from secretaries to schedulers to nurses to teachers to principals, trying to get the full gamut of folks. We've also worked hard on data quality. We've got our secretaries, we gather them up about once every other month for a 90-minute session. We'll be meeting next week with that team again. We missed a meeting due to weather, like most people did this winter, and, but our next one's next week, and we're excited about that. We gave you a lot to think about in a very, very short amount of time. I'm going to ask for questions here in just a second, but this is a quote that's really important to me. It seems like we're going fast, and we are. We know that. But here's, here's kind of the, one of the several mantras we've been putting out there. We'd rather be a year too early than a kid too late. And, and it's not to say that we feel like we're behind, we just know that our kids need this stuff, and they need it now. And so sometimes it does feel a little rushed. We're trying to do our best to be thoughtful and planful, but sometimes there's, there's changes that have to happen, and they have to happen quick. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the floor for any questions that you might have. Again, I apologize for making a drink from the fire hose there. Typically, we would go a little slower and go a little deeper.
I have a question about security. So, over here at the board table. Craig.
Oh, I'm sorry. I could hear the voice, I couldn't figure out where to try. Jennifer, go ahead, please.
Hi, guys!
It's like, voice from the heavens. I'm so sorry.
No problem, no problem. I have a question about security. I think it's fantastic that we're providing our students with access to, to technology at home so that they can better interface with, with different curriculums. But I am also concerned about, since, since they're going to be off of our Wi-Fi.
Right.
What are, what are some steps in place for security so that we know that our, our devices are going to be used appropriately?
Sure, great question. And I anticipate we'll answer this question. This is actually part of our presentation we're going to give at Jefferson later tonight. So we do cover this in the more global sense. We've purchased a product earlier this year called Securely, which is a filtering product that works off, off and onsite. And we particularly like this product from the standpoint that not only does it, it doesn't matter where the kid's at, they're going to get the same filtering level that we would give them here, but in addition to that, it's going to give parents some insight and control over what their, their children are doing online. So for example, if parents sign up with us, they can get a weekly report of what their kids have been doing online, and they can get access to a portal to get more real-time ability to see. And I anticipate, although we don't have the policy details worked on in this quite yet, but I anticipate that we're going to give parents the ability to blacklist sites that happen outside of school hours. We want to maintain the integrity of what happens during the school day, so we kind of keep our environment as homogenous as possible during the school day. But outside of school hours, we realize that some of the sites we may want blocked, or we may want to open for school, parents may find distracting or unhelpful at home, so we give parents that right, that ability as well. So we're very excited about that, and that'll be with, with all of our one-to-one devices that go home.
Are you getting a lot of parents that are participating in forums that you're having to?
Yeah.
Better inform them?
You know, we can always do better there, but I, but I, but I would say I was pleasantly surprised with our, with our, with our stop at Kennedy. We had about 100 folks, so that was, that was a nice turnout. At Washington, it was a little lighter last week, but it was still 35, 40 folks, so it wasn't, it wasn't too light. I'm really interested to see what we'll have tonight at Jefferson, so. And we're, we're planning to do at least tentatively another round of these in August as well. So we're going to try to get out there and make these opportunities available, as many parents as we can.
Are you getting positive feedback generally from the staff in terms of excitement about how they might use these tools?
Yeah, I think there's equal parts anxiety and excitement. And, and you know, it's like anything that's worth doing. And honestly, I feel that myself. You know, anything that's worth doing is going to be a little anxiety-provoking. The thing we're trying to make clear with our staff is that we don't expect the, we talked about having these sort of seismic shifts, right? Well, we don't expect that to happen next fall, or even probably by the end of next school year. What we want to see are these incremental shifts, and we didn't really dive deep into that, but we've, we've laid out a couple of qualitative models that we're looking at. One of them is called SAMR, S-A-M-R, which sort of is a conversational tool that we'll have with staff, and we've been working with our instructional leaders, our principals and our instructional coaches and our instructional design leaders, to help them coach around that. So there's, you're going to have these qualitative conversations around, okay, this is a strong use, this is maybe not so strong use. The flip side of that is, as soon as we get kids engaged in, in digital content, we can then bring to bear all of our accessibility tools right out of the gate. So even at the lowest level of SAMR, which would be substitution where the kids basically, or the staff members basically just taking, let's say, a worksheet that they might have had on paper and transforming that into a digital format, when we do that, when we have that transformation happen, we suddenly are able to bring all of our text-to-speech, speech-to-text tools to bear. And kids don't have to take the reading test to get access to the math test then, or the science test. And that's really exciting. So, yeah, kind of a little of both, I guess.
So, based on where things are at right now, how are we going to deal with students that maybe didn't have a device before, they just worked on a mobile device, and then understanding that they're moving to something different? I mean, yes, some have used them in school, but not necessarily at home, right? So, when they have this device, and you realize that some kids may not consider the future in what they're doing, right? Posting, you know, content, doing all sorts of things that, hey, it seemed like a good idea now, but 10 years from now, might not have been a good idea, right? So, yeah, so, you know, being responsible digital citizens, right? So, how are we, are we dealing with that? I mean, are we looking at...
Yeah, we're certainly trying. And it's another area where I don't think that, it's like many things, it's hard to do too much in that arena. One of the things you saw, if I would go all the way back, and could you use the remote, which I'm not going to do. On the professional learning slide, we had a picture of a gentleman up there, who we didn't really talk about, he's a guy named Kevin Honeycutt, who we brought in with a grant this year. He's a digital literacy thought leader who's kind of internationally known, and he worked with our principals, our IDLs, IDSs for the better part of a day in early February, and they did a keynote address to all of our high school staff. And one of his things, he talks a lot about digital legacy, digital footprints, those sorts of things. Now, those sorts of one-off things aren't super transformative, but they at least start the conversation. So, when I see things that what's happening at Johnson, which was Dr. Buck's report, which is getting right at what you're after, you know, we're trying to align those things out, and we're having similar conversations within our library professional learning community, PLC as well. But there's work to do there. We'll have to get there. The other thing is that we're trying to also set up things like Securely to fit into that conversation. So, how do we leverage those types of tools into this conversation and bring parents into this as well? Because you're absolutely right. Kids are more so than any of us focused in the now and not so much the other, you know, the future, and there can be some significant mistakes made.
Right, and, you know, having those supports there for them, I think, is going to be key, whether it's staff, or, you know, like the idea that, you know, eventually, as we kind of roll out younger and younger to middle school, you know, elementary, they're going to need those supports to remember that there is going to be a legacy of whatever's left behind, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think you also talked, mentioned about low-cost internet for low-income families. How does that work?
Yeah, so, the Sprint grant's our first wave of addressing that. And that's about 300 hotspots, which can connect up to 10 devices. So, this will work for a whole household. And we've got access to give those out at our four high schools. It's roughly between 75 and 90 of those per high school. And we're giving those out to people who identify, self-identify as not having access on district registration and would meet income guidelines. The MediaCom is basically just there for anybody. We're bringing, we bring flyers out in multiple languages. In fact, we didn't really talk about that, but we brought out translated versions. I want to say, I think we've got French, Spanish, and Swahili going to Kennedy, or not Kennedy, Jefferson tonight for that. That's another piece of it. We'd like to have a similar relationship with Iman. And then finally, you know, once we get through this, I think we're looking also at purchasing some additional district devices that we may backfill if we need to. Because one of the things that we really are passionate about in my team, and Ryan's been a great advocate for this, is if there's no digital equity, there's no equity. And we're in fact, kind of a preview of next year, we're going to try to bring in, in fact, we're not trying to, we are going to bring in, we set the date, a gentleman to do some professional learning, same way we had Kevin Honeycutt come in. We're going to have another gentleman named Ken Shelton, Dr. Ken Shelton, come in, and his whole thing is on tech equity. And it's basically that idea that we need to be thinking more and more about that. So, we've tried that. The other thing I didn't mention about the Chromebooks is that we're not collecting them over the summer. We're going to send them home, and those are going to stay with kids until they exit us either as a senior, or they exit because they're going to school somewhere else, or the device ages out. And we're going to try to get four years out of the device. So, and we can lock them, and we can brick them if they've been stolen, lost, or misplaced, you know, those sorts of things. So, you know, we will have some loss that way, but other places I've done this, places like Council Bluffs, other light-sized districts, you know, typically don't see a huge stop-loss. But that's another equity issue for me as well.
What else do you need from us as a board? Is there anything that you can see us helping additionally at this point? I mean, we've been supportive of this for a long time, so.
No, we, I would just say your continued support. That's the biggest thing. I mean, at this point, you know, we're dumping some significant resource this way, and we have to, to kind of get the pipeline started. And I would just say that, you know, we're on a sustainable path, but there's, these things change, and as we, you know, need to evolve, if we need different tools, to be open to listening to that conversation, you know, we'd of course make a, you know, cost-benefit argument as well. But I would just say your continued support would be the best thing. And that's what's made being here for the last, boy, it's almost nine months now, I said, I was going to say eight, but it's been nine, so enjoyable. There's been a lot of intense days, but there hasn't been many bad days, and it's been really work where I feel like, you know, it's so meaningful and powerful, and that's largely directed by people like Dr. Buck, Noreen, and the rest of the, the rest of the executive team, and going all the way up to the board. So, thank you for that, and we can just keep that going. That would, that would be about the most I could ask for.
Yeah, so before we, I feel like we're getting close to the wrap-up here. So, I just want to thank Craig and Lori and Ryan and their team for all the work that's been underway, and especially thank the board. So, this vision cast over a year ago, and when we started down this pathway to a revised tech plan, there was real intentionality from the board in saying, "Let's really think about what getting devices in the hands of kids could mean for all of our kids." So, thank you for that. And it's coming to, it's exciting, you're hearing it tonight that it's coming to life. And, you know, John, I really appreciate your question. There will be, my guess, staff members in sort of every, if you had a continuum, from super nervous to super excited, I don't know if that's the right endpoints, but there'll be people all across that continuum. And to the extent that we can encourage everyone along that way and grow capacity, but yeah, I think, I thought your answer was probably right on point, right? It's, yes, and. So, but it's exciting times, super exciting times, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I'm off to Jefferson.
Next, we have information, this is an information item on the English learner update. Brad Dooley and Eric Christensen.
Yes, so we're excited to give you an update on our English learners program. And Eric, as well as Emily Gatto, who kind of helps facilitate this program across the district, they're going to give you some specifics of talking about kind of the history of the program, as well as the services that we provide around interpretation, around instruction, and then the expansion of the program. But, just like with digital literacy, we're going to get started with a video.
The English Language Learners Program, or ELL, has one of the fastest-growing populations in the district. The program is designed to help students function successfully and independently in mainstream classrooms without English support. Many of the students are part of families that are either refugees fleeing life-threatening situations, or immigrants in search of a better life. Many enter the classroom with little or no English language skills.
Students who are in the ELL program in the Cedar Rapids Community Schools come from all over the world. And so, we have a large number of students who come from this area in Africa, kind of Central Africa. They come from the Democratic Republic of the Congo, Tanzania, Burundi, so kind of this area here. We also have a large population of students who come from Central America, so over here in Mexico as well.
ELL students can vary on age and country of origin. Currently, 68 countries are represented, and the top five native languages spoken are Spanish, Swahili, Karundi, French, and Nepali.
Instead of doing 9 times 8, if we do 9 times 7...
Instruction is done by immersing students in a classroom with their peers, and then giving them special small group attention in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Many will be able to read and understand English phrases in as little as a few weeks. The district first introduced the ELL program in 1979 at Squaw Creek Elementary and Washington High Schools. In 1983, the elementary program was moved to Cleveland Elementary, and Roosevelt was added as a middle school. At that time, it was called English as a Second Language. The name was changed in 2000 because many of the students would enter the program already speaking several languages. The program experienced consistent growth through 2013, with more buildings being added to accommodate the ELL student population. Since the 2013-2014 school year, it has experienced unprecedented growth, with an addition of about 100 new students per year. Many families choose to resettle into the area because of good schools, affordable housing, and job availability. The district's ELL program will continue to grow and adapt as needed, placing students first, creating relationships, and a welcoming environment to make every learner future-ready.
Yes, it'd be balloon good.
We were just commenting on the video, some of the things that I'm going to show you are part of the video, so. I have my glasses on. So, okay, I think I'm there. I was making fun of Craig, and now I come up here. Anyway, like the video stated, what we're doing right now in ELL, we're growing about 100, 120 kids a year. And as you can see from the video and this graph, it is, it is a rising subgroup, so just wanted to share that with you. And we project that will continue based on some census data and with Emily working with some of our partnerships that are in town. So, that is that. Oh, you got to point it this way, sorry. Still not doing it. How's that? Okay, and again on, again on the video, this was interesting to me. As Emily and I were talking, again, it was on the video, but as you look at all the stars on this map, this is Cedar Rapids, this is our ELL. And of course, as we're looking at the top five or six countries that are represented, of course, the United States with their second-generation families would be certainly a country that we're serving, along with Mexico, Guatemala, the Democratic Republic of Congo, and Burundi. So, that kind of gives you a snapshot of where some of our kiddos are coming from. Forty years of ELL in Cedar Rapids. If you look at this, if you look at this slide, Mark in the video mentioned Squaw Creek. Something very interesting and personal to me, if you don't mind for a minute or two, is that my father actually was a principal in the district. And I remember about this big, when Squaw Creek opened, and we had a lot of families that came to our house, and my father was a part of that work. So, spent a lot of time with him and learning, learning about ELL, even at a fifth or sixth grader, which was awesome. Currently, this is where we stand. We have six elementary schools currently serving ELL. We have two middle schools, and we're back to three high schools that are serving ELL. Top five languages, Mark mentioned this, Spanish, Swahili, Karundi, French, and Nepali. Underneath, 474 speakers, it just gives you kind of a snapshot of where these kids and what they're speaking. I like the, I like the first bullet point. 74% of English learners speak one of these as their native language. So, you can imagine, we have 60-plus native languages currently being spoken in our district, which is so exciting when you look at diversity. Having been a former ELL principal, elementary principal, I don't think people realize how valuable it is to have diversity in our buildings. What we learn, what the staff learns, what the students are learning from each other is just, it really makes up a fun and interactive environment. It's awesome. And this is, this is something we're really proud of as an ELL department. So, when I came on board last year and working with Emily, we had some problems, challenges, I should say, of getting interpreters. You can imagine all the parent conferences going on at night, and their evening conferences. So, what we ended up doing, instead of just relying, relying on our three full-time bilingual liaisons, we went out into the community, and we recruited, we had a couple recruiting nights down here at the central office. We brought in several community members, went through the process, had a nice discussion. And from that alone, we were able to capture 23 community interpreters, along with seven of our district employees that speak another language. This has been a huge win for us as a district, because safe to say, I'm the person that gets the complaints coming when an interpreter doesn't show up at conference. And Emily and I were talking, one maybe, two complaints, or just, A, the guy, the person didn't show up. So, we are really excited with this, and we're going to continue working next fall in getting more people signed up to help us interpret. Lot of translations and documents. I know we helped out Craig and his team with digital literacy, translating a lot of documents for them. Some people ask me, "So, what do you do if you need translation with one of the, one of the languages that are not prominent?" We certainly use this tele-language services, which I believe have over 300 languages that we can tap if necessary. So, Emily did a great job. I'm going to talk about her for a second. In terms of this, they get trained, the new interpreters get training. We go through the code of ethics and confidentiality. As you know, at conference time, you know, we're talking about some specific things with kiddo strengths and challenges. So, that has gone really, really well. So, this is something we're, we're very excited about. I'm not going to talk a lot about it, because Emily's going to address it, but the other really exciting thing with our ELL team is the expansion. And you're going to hear a little bit more about that. We've expanded to seven, seven more elementary for next fall, and two more middle schools. So, when we talk about equity, we're getting ELL across the district, but I'll have Emily talk a little bit more about that. Questions up to this point?
I have a question. I see for the full-time interpreters, it's Spanish and Swahili. For those additional 30, what other, are those, are, do we have other language? How many of the 60-plus are represented? Do we know?
All of the top five are represented.
Top five, which is our represented. Almost, our top 10 is what we would really aim for.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And what's, what's pretty amazing is, some of those interpreters know six or seven languages and dialects. So, yeah, it's unbelievable.
I'll pass it over to Emily. She's going to talk more on the instructional side of what ELL teachers actually do, and some of their responsibilities.
I need to point it over there. I got it. Thanks. There you go. Okay. Thank you. So, the, quickly, we're going to run through this. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about second language acquisition, but essentially, all students have to run through five levels of language acquisition. So, we have students that come in that speak no English whatsoever, and so they spend a lot of time just listening, and they may or may not talk for quite a while. And then they have to go through learning words, learning on phrases, before they go into simple sentences, complex sentences, all the way up to academic proficiency. One of the tricks that we're seeing more of is that we have a lot of students coming to enroll for the first time ever in a US school at late elementary, middle, or high school. And those students still have to follow through all of these, but yet, at high school, at 16-years-old, you're trying to catch your peers at 16, and you have no prior schooling. So, it's taking a little bit longer for those students to get through all the levels, but that is our goal for every student. The teachers in the program does follow sort of a gradual release program, in that those students that do come to us as newcomers, or students with limited, or interrupted, or sometimes no formal schooling in their, in their previous country, do receive the most support. At the high school, this means three ELL classes a day, plus co-taught classes for the rest of your time, to really give you a lot of support and a lot of direct instruction. As students move through those levels and they gain proficiency, the ELL teachers kind of step back a little bit. And this makes sure that once they do exit the program, that we have set them up for success, and they're not reliant on the ELL program any longer. Our ELL teachers do play three key roles in our district. They obviously work on second language acquisition. We do run that daily small group instruction that works on communication and vocabulary. They work to give meaningful access to grade-level curriculum. So, even at high school, if you know no English, we still have to work on chemistry and biology and earth science, and work on catching you up on everything that you missed, because you didn't go to school in elementary or middle school in our district or in the United States. They are creating lessons based on each student's language proficiency level in each of the four language domains. So, we pay attention to students' listening, reading, writing, and speaking levels, and determine where they're at, and how far we can push them to get to the next level in all of those areas. The last thing that our ELL teachers do that's a little unique to their position is that they serve as the local experts. So, they are on a lot of committees within our buildings, because they are the people in the building who know about second language acquisition, who know about ELL students. They also are the voice at the table, usually. We know, our ELL parents are not always ones to come into school, because they don't necessarily know that they can come into school and ask questions and be the advocate for their child. And so, our teachers step in place for that, to make sure that our ELL students are receiving everything that they can. The last site is our ELL expansion. So, the schools in blue are the ones that next year will have an ELL program. This is very exciting. We have students that get to attend their homeschool for the first time ever. We're cutting down on transportation. We're allowing students to have access to participate in after-school activities. We're giving parents the ability to walk to school, to go to conferences, to go to music concerts at night, to pick up sick children when they get a call from school that they need to come immediately. We're also sort of sharing the knowledge of our ELL kids throughout the whole entire city, which is something we're really... city, which is something we're really excited about. And, any questions?
Are we adding staff as we expand that, or is it the same staff and they're just getting redistributed?
We are adding two additional elementary staff for the expansion purpose. Middle school staff is being shifted around.
With, that's, there's been a fairly significant increase in ELL staff over the last few years. The board, you likely all recall, but just for those that may be watching, made a commitment to staff our ELL in really pretty amazing ways, and so, that has translated to additional ELL staff over the years. And this is really exciting, from an equity and access standpoint, the ability to be in their homeschool is just, I mean, I get kinda goosebumps about where that's at.
You, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
You talked a little bit about, some of these students are coming from pretty challenging backgrounds, refugees, and I can only imagine coming from other countries to the US. So, the social-emotional part of it, we really didn't get into that a lot, but you mentioned the teachers certainly fill that role. What kinds of things above and beyond what we normally see in the classroom, or the teachers or staff having to do with these kiddos?
One of the unique things is that if you are the ELL teacher, say at elementary, you have kids in sixth-grade levels, so you might have two or three children from the same family that you see every single day. So, they form really close relationships with families. And our teachers have become sort of the go-to person for that family, regardless of what they need in the community. Our teachers work to be aware of everything that's available in the community. So, when a family comes in and says, you know, we are low on food, what can we do? Our teachers have resources to say, here are the food banks in town, and here are their hours. We are working with some mental health places to try and figure out what to do and how to serve students. Can be really tricky, because different cultures see mental health differently, and so, working with students in the school system has been a little tricky.
Great, thank you.
You mentioned annual training for the interpreters. What does that consist of? What are you doing at those trainings?
It is a couple hours, an hour training. We do talk about what it means to, because those interpreters are on short-term contracts with our district, so they are technically district employees. We do talk about all things ethics and confidentiality when you walk into a school, how to present yourself, how to let them know that you are an interpreter, what it means to sit and be the interpreter without adding anything of your opinion, because essentially, you are kind of invisible as the go-between for families. Just kinda that reminder of the expectations that we have for you, and also, the knowledge that, should you not follow these expectations, that you will be sort of bumped down the list of interpreters that we call.
Thank you.
So, Emily, you mentioned that there were some challenges with students that come in, middle school, high school, and the fact that maybe this is the first formal education that they've had. So, would you have an idea of how many kids we have that exit the program, whether it's through graduation? And then, if they're still not at those levels that we were talking about, what do we have in place, or what could we have in place in a future state to help with that transition and integration into the community, or employment, or, you know, additional education?
Yes. We have, we exit around 50 to 60 students every year, that's K-12. The exiting requirements are changing this year, so we look to exit more students, because they've, they've taken out some of the Iowa assessment requirements. We also have a good relationship with Kirkwood, and Kirkwood's high school equivalency program has an ELL component to it. And so, once students age out of our system, because they can stay until 21 in ELL, should they not want to stay until 21, or they've aged out, we do work with Kirkwood pretty closely to get them to continue that education over there.
All right, thanks.
I'd like to compliment you on including students as the student voice at the table, as the local expert. I think that's excellent. Really gives students direct ownership of their education, giving them that voice, and I think that's fantastic. So, great job there, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much. Next, we'll move to administration. And we'll make sure that I get you, Dave, this time.
This won't take very long, 'cause I'm not, you know, planning on going up to the podium. I don't really have a presentation, but this is just for setting the public hearing for the budget amendment that we typically do. And most in years past, it's always been done at the, at the actual certification night as well. But I pushed this off a little bit, in case we hadn't more information to be able to roll into the budget specifically, if we were gonna have some additional expenses with regards to Coolidge, and how much that would come in this year potentially, if we were moving forward with some, you know, things that have progressed enough, so we knew a lot of architect fees might be coming in payments. So, we don't have that data right now. So, basically, I'm just rolling the budget, ending the budget, kinda like we have in years past, where we, it's taking miscellaneous income, availability, and looking at our fund balances, and what are, we're projecting our budget to be, and then just adding 10%. So, this is not gonna increase taxation whatsoever, it's just basically, we're anticipating we're adding 10%, so that we are assured that we're not exceeding any of the four functional areas.
No, this is just a voice vote.
A voice vote, okay. So, is that the reason why you jumped? So, we need a voice vote.
Yes.
All in favor, accept.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Thank you, Dave. Dave, you can be seated right now. Next, we will be moving into a closed session for evaluation of professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered. I need a motion to go into the closed session.
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, April 22nd, 2019, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation, and that the individual has requested a closed session as provided in Section 21.5, one subsection I of the Iowa Code.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Well, this will be a roll call.
Director Jacobo. Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
Director Janson.
Aye.
President Humble.
Aye. I want to remind folks that to grab their school calendars, and right now, the meeting will be recess. Will be in recess.